Put our divisions to the line, United States of America. And the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, he's on. He's even on the camera.
No, I'm trying to whisper in me, but... Ears or not?
We're not muted.
Phil, nice to see ya.
Are you muted? Hey Bruce, are you muted?
I'm muted.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
This connection cannot hear us yet.
Right.
Okay, now we're...
As a universal language, you know.
He's muted now.
You're muted.
Yeah, we should all know by now, probably.
You're muted. I can't tell if he can... Hear us or not. Bruce, can you hear us? If you can, shake your head yes. We can hear you. Unmute yourself.
Okay.
Alright, we're gonna call the... Um, any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
A whole second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great. Uh, the minutes from August first?
I did get a chance to put those over, and I look into me, so I motion to approve those minutes. Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, and then approve the claims?
I got, uh, two hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and one dollars and thirty-two cents. Two eight three nine oh one point thirty-two. And drainage was fifty-seven thousand seventy-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Five seven zero seven three point thirty-nine.
I will second Dave's motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, general public concerns. Are there any? Okay, Sina, we'll move forward. Okay, Ben, perfect timing.
Morning.
Good morning.
Is everybody this morning?
That's round a few years.
Strong inch and a half, inch and three quarters, that's it. What'd they get up here?
I dumped a half out.
I had an inch and a half at my place, roughly.
They shut down the fairgrounds yesterday for the drainage because of too much water.
Yeah, we got standing water in the yard up here. You might have a full in here, drainage.
There might be a little guy out there holding a half of it.
I figured Bruce says he's gonna take off on Sunday with the motorcycle, so...
Looks like he did.
It rains, right?
Yep.
Uh, I've just got the one item on the agenda to approve an application working the counties right away with, uh, Mid-American Energy to install a new line, uh, underneath C-12. This is for Pete Gorman, uh, I believe he's...
No, he's actually putting through phase power in.
To his shed.
Okay.
Uh, I've talked with Kusuth County, their plan is to approve this tomorrow at their...
Looks like most of the work is in Kusuth County. Just across the road.
It'll be a new pole for us, and then they're gonna bore underneath the road.
Oh, they're gonna, pole's gonna be on the Humboldt County side, and then they're gonna bore underneath the...
The power line.
They've got a big peak lined up to...
So actually get a board in there, under the road.
Yes.
Well... I'll second Dave's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, there he is.
Yep, he just, I can hear him click twice, text him so we can hear you now.
What else going on, Ben?
Uh, slurry leveling, uh, has been completed on State's Avenue. They finished that Friday night about five-thirty. They're moving over to one hundred and sixty-fifth, a diagonal out of Red Gate. And they should be running that today. They should finish that today. I'll talk to the strippers and get them to come in as soon as they can afterwards. Fort Dodge asphalt will be done with their work probably mid-afternoon today, I would say.
Yeah, I commented on them over the weekend. The guy said it was very surprising and very welcome to drive up. He just finished it.
I drove it, uh, Friday night, the one lane, southbound lane. Ride's nice. The more traffic that we get on it, uh, the smoother and the nicer the ride will go with those.
So we should get on the road and drive on it, right?
Yep.
How's the work on West Hardy on that box?
West Hardy, floor's done, sidewalls are done, uh, the roof is all framed up and ready to go. The rebar's in place. Uh, they could not get concrete Thursday afternoon, otherwise that wouldn't be completed. So it looks really nice. If you've been by there. Guess is they've got concrete lined up this morning. I haven't talked to the Hardy shop yet.
Okay.
Plan is to get that done here this week and get it back. Guys are edge rutting, finishing up edge rutting, uh, plating with all of this rain. All the employees are getting out. Got two mowers running in the boat area right now. Humboldt's mower is sitting at Casey Nielsen's. EGR code basically is, it's telling them that the depth sensor, or that the depth is empty, but the tank's full.
That must be a common thing, 'cause...
It is. I hate those, uh, tier four emissions that they're requiring.
When they dug my well up there, that's what happened. Their thing shut down, 'cause it said it was out of depth, and it wasn't. And it took them a day and a half to fix it.
Yeah, that's the problem that we're running into with our newer trucks as well.
Exactly same thing.
About every eighteen months, two years, it seems like a new EGR valve. Beyond that, yeah, we're working on, um, the U-911 signs. I got a meeting tomorrow with Chuck Britson on bridge design. They've come up with, uh, three, the three design alternatives. They wanna run through them with me.
Is that what that, in the claims was for already? Okay, I've seen that.
Yeah, so they've been, uh, progressing on the three designs. I've looked at their preliminary set of plans, and, yeah, they're moving along really nice, so...
Still thinking about straightening the road out?
I'd like to. Uh, that's option number one, is running straight north. Uh, option two and three are running east and building a new road that runs east. Bill looks in with, uh, what is it, one hundred and ninety-eight more Florida.
Hundred and ninety.
So, uh, it moves the road, and the one design that they've got, the new road comes out, uh, south of Max Reveney's house.
Yeah, I was gonna say, moving in quite a ways.
Yeah, yeah. So we can get away from the river where we've got all of the bank failure issues.
Well, is this still contingent on getting that extra, whatever the name of that money is, from the state?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's almost, I, I don't wanna say grant, but it's what you applied for, and they want all this information. Is this along the same lines of...
That's what I'm...
Additional information that you're providing them with this?
So what, what this is, uh, Chuck Britson is doing the preliminary plans. They're doing the, uh, wetland evaluation. They're getting all of our MIPA and shipload clearances. They're basically getting everything ready to the point that if we get approved for funding, we're ready to go.
Okay. Sliding up the ducks.
Yes.
Does this help with qualifying for the...
Yeah. Yes, yes.
No, 'cause I think you, you learned here the last couple of years, the more information they have, the more apt you are to get the funding.
The projects that they were apt to take last time had all of these ducks in a row that they had done fifteen, twenty years ago, and...
Were waiting.
They didn't have funding back then. So, the way we looked at it, when we started this process a year or so ago, was it's never gonna be cheaper than what it is right now to do the study. So, you know, if we decide five years from now, ten years from now that we're gonna do it, it would cost that much more.
Right. And this is, and then you're behind eight more.
And then you're behind, yep. And then you've missed funding opportunities because you didn't have this completed.
Well, time of the year does the state look at, the money sort of gonna release to whatever, you know, projects?
So there's, there's two different applications that we apply for. We apply for county bridge funding. That application is usually due in November, uh, and then the award is usually a couple of months later. The other one is gone through all of the iterations to different names, uh, Build Back Better, I think, is what our... I-J-A grant, I guess is what we've called it. But that's the one that they're looking at, a hundred million dollars, one application for the state, for all ninety-nine counties. And if the state of Iowa gets granted, that's when they'll come in, they'll say, okay, well now, we've got X amount of dollars from the feds to go towards projects, what do we got for projects?
And that...
That's, that's what I'm aiming for.
I know, and that, that timeframe on that?
Uh, applications are due, I believe, September fifteenth. So they're in the process of writing the grant application right now on behalf of the ninety-nine counties for the state.
For the whole state?
For the whole state, yep.
Okay, so that's, there's two possible sources of funding then. Is there anything you have to do after the studies that you're telling us about to be ready for this project? Or is that pretty much the, all the information that you can acquire?
That's the preliminary. I mean, if we get, uh, preliminarily approved, we start purchasing right away.
Right.
Uh, start purchasing wetland credits, uh...
But this is enough to satisfy the state looking at potential projects?
Well, right now, we're trying to satisfy the other ninety-nine counties to make ours the cream of the...
Right, that's what I'm saying. It looks like, hey, this is a, no, almost a shovel-ready project.
Right, yep.
I hope, I hope it gets there.
Me too.
Thanks for doing all that.
Yeah. Optimistic.
Yeah.
Beyond that, uh, just busy working. I believe we're gonna replace a wooden box culvert over by Rose Avenue on C-20 here in the coming week or two. I talked to Tom briefly this morning. Uh, his goal is...
What, the world is rose? I don't think I've ever heard of that up there by the barn.
Jimmy Holstrud.
Oh, Jimmy's Road.
Yeah.
Oh, Jimmy's Road, okay. Where the box culvert located?
It'd be just, I think it's just west of that intersection, if I remember right. It's a three-by-three wood laminate box culvert. Uh, we're gonna be replacing it with thirty-six inch concrete.
Oh, yeah.
Do it ourselves.
You, you had one clean?
Uh, one.
Yeah, Ben, is that the one that said it was cleaned?
No, 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 that's on gravel.
Oh, is this on the black? This is on the black. Cause Rose Avenue is not a black top.
No, this is just west of Rose on...
Oh, okay. Cause I was gonna say, that other box laminate.
That was cleaned down.
That's okay for a while. That's a five-year plan down the road, but you'll have to replace that someday, but...
That one has shifted to the fifth year on our five-year plan.
At least.
I walked through it last year.
They cleaned it with the paint-out project for that drainage district, and it's actually good for hopefully five-plus years.
Yep.
Now, this is on the blacktop.
Yes.
So we're gonna cut the blacktop?
We're gonna cut the blacktop, dig it out.
What is there right now?
Uh, three, three foot by three foot wood laminate box, similar to the one that was cleaned out on the gravel road.
Okay.
It's just a little bit smaller.
Realize there's some wood laminate boxes left in that area. It's just, uh, when the water goes through there when it rains, is all.
It's a dry cross, more or less.
Has it deteriorated pretty bad, though?
It's just in rough shape. It's rotten. We're in the process of trying to get rid of all wood laminate boxes that we've got on hard surface roads.
Yep, good idea.
I, I think we're, we're down to very few left now.
Okay, and what are you replacing it with again?
Uh, thirty-six inch concrete, round.
Perfect.
So, backfill with rock, and plan is to do a patch before we open the road back up.
Good idea, really?
Yeah, that way we don't have the same issue that we had with the previous one in South Town.
Okay, yeah, and that, next bump on that ever coming up?
Uh, hopefully here in the next week or two.
Get her, get her done before harvest?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else for me?
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, Randy. Special reception use application for C-1 Commercial District Campground in, and into Agricultural District at twenty-four twenty Ohio Avenue.
Yeah, I actually have a couple of things. I was gonna present these last week, but, uh, and I, I wasn't really sure if they should be closed session or not, 'cause just, I wasn't sure. Along with the one item, uh, from last week, but, uh, we have, as you may recall, we have, uh, an opening for both the Zoning and Planning Commission membership, and also the Board of Adjustments. And we have a person that has agreed to serve on the Zoning and Planning Commission. And according to the ordinance, I think they have to be, uh, approved by the Board of Supervisors appointed. And so I have, I can, I don't know if that needs to be in the closed session.
No, no, no.
I didn't really think so.
No.
But, uh, as you recall, I asked the Board of Supervisors, give me names and stuff, it might be a possibility. And, uh, so I've been sending out, uh, information to a lot of different people that I've contacted on what are the duties and responsibilities for each of those. And, uh, Kevin Cordray of Humboldt has agreed to, uh, serve on the Zoning and Planning Commission. Which is good, because, uh, we're going to be, uh, beginning the process, as you may recall, the rewriting of the, uh, comprehensive plan. I, I currently have then included with that, you may recall, you asked that I contact mayors, and I have done that. I've got some people that have called back and that wanna be included. And so it would be good to have the full commission and people that will call back. I'm, I'm in the process of trying to decide a date for our first meeting. Midas had suggested that maybe in August, uh, so I contacted them back, maybe mid-August to late August would be good. And so I'll be contacting them this week, setting up a, uh, date and time. Location, I'm not sure of. I didn't know what, uh, what we really needed as far as numbers, and I didn't know what was really available. I'll talk with them and ask them what, what they recommend. I didn't know if the county fairgrounds was possible, or if we need something different than that. Uh, I'm just not sure. So if you got any input on that, you know, I'd really appreciate it, so I can give them information. And like I say, right now, I'm not sure the number of people. Probably sitting around eight right now, but I'm anticipating maybe there'll be ten or twelve, uh, total. Yeah, and also, but we have that room upstairs now.
Oh, that's right.
That's about twice the size of this room.
That would, that would be...
On the third floor. There's, there's a big table up there and chairs now. They got it all repainted and stuff, haven't they? And I'll be asking...
You got an office too?
Oh, yeah, you got your office up there too. That's a very nice setup too, and you got your...
Yep, there's a television in two.
Second to those would probably be your best option.
Okay, it'd be handy.
Handy for people.
They're very hospitable out in that location.
Yeah. It'd be nice to have, you know, not something that's, that's huge, obviously.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, but I'll get more information from Midas on, uh, what they recommend. You might recall that they have a template, uh, that they have for this process. And the first meeting would be simply explaining what comprehensive plan and the need for it, and requirements for that, I think. And so I'll be getting that started. So I, I'm not sure how you, uh, it doesn't really say how you make the approval for this person.
Uh, yeah, but you do, you do give us a recommendation, and we make a motion and approve it or deny it. You, you, is that your recommendation?
I don't, I don't know, Kevin.
Oh, I, I think Kevin would be very good. He actually called me, and I referred him back to you for any particulars on, and you, this is for just the zoning, planning and zoning?
Zoning and Planning Commission.
Zoning and Planning Commission.
He's ambitious. We have four, and we need, we need one.
Did you say he would be Board of Adjustments though, too?
No.
Oh, I thought you said he would do both boards?
No.
Did you ask him about that?
I gave him both, I gave everybody that I contacted, I gave them both the duties and responsibilities on both of those boards. And then I didn't have anybody for, obviously, for either one, so I thought, you know, first come, first served, so to speak, and so... And he contacted me, uh, for the, uh, Zoning and Planning Commission.
Alright.
I have two or three other people that have, uh, contacted me about, uh, about that as well. I want, I've asked them to actually send me something in writing or text or something that, that they say, you know. And so I'm, I'm waiting on a couple of those things, so I'm hoping by the end of the week, uh, I'll, I'll know more on that, so we'll see.
Yep, Kevin would be a very good choice.
If that is the case, I would make the motion, uh, to approve the appointment to, of Kevin Cordray to the Zoning and Planning Commission.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And good luck getting the person for the Board of Adjustment. Tom, you do have some, some...
I might get some interest. I've had, uh, one person that wanted to, but just too busy.
Okay.
And, uh, I've got, like I say, a couple others that I've been contacting and communicating with, and so if not, the, the search goes on. So, you know, the second item I have is, uh, I'll give you this. The Board of Adjustments will be having a meeting on the fifteenth on a special exception use application. And that application is by Jeff Coates at twenty-four twenty Ohio Avenue. And the map you have there, the top map, I have an arrow there showing you, uh, where that's at on our zoning map. And then the second page is a closer view of the parcel itself. And, uh, I've already, uh, I've already talked to the Board of Adjustments on that, and, uh, basically that process is in place as far as the date and time on the, uh, like I said, on the fifteenth. And, uh, I have communicated with Jeff. I did a site visit. He doesn't have all the particular details, because he's looking at just providing, getting, uh, an approval. He wants to get an engineer in place to do some design, but I explained to him all of the different, uh, requirements, setbacks, and that kinda thing. Now, you might notice on that second page, uh, you can see where the, where the parcel is. And on the map, that is an A-2, uh, agricultural district. Now, and that would be on the southeast corner of where Ohio Avenue turns to the east. If you look at the map, on the other side, on the northwest corner there, that's actually commercial.
Why in the world is that commercial?
I don't know. It's, it's all agricultural land right now, and I don't know if it was anticipated to be, or it was in the past. I'm not sure. If it were, if it were commercial where his parcel is now, it would be a principal use for that. But the, where it's at, he has to go through the special exception use process. I, like I said, I did the site visit, and I explained to him everything he needed. And I also, I also explained to him the, the fifteen, and he lives in Inglewood, California. But he has that property that he comes back to. And, uh, the way I understand it, he's, also has a business out there. He's former military, and also police for, uh, Los Angeles. And now he does two or three other different things. But, uh, he, I had him actually write out a testimony that I will read at the Board of Adjustments meeting. His granddaughter will be here to represent him, uh, with a phone contact, so that he can actually be connected with us. And, but he asked that I would read his testimony. The notification in the paper has occurred. I'm also, have in mail, the mail, uh, contacts to those property owners within two hundred feet that is recommended by the ordinance. It's not required, just, uh, it says, it's easy.
So it's better to be safe than sorry.
Sounds like all of the proper protocol and steps are being followed on this application.
Yeah, and like I say, he didn't know exactly where the location would be on that, except it would be on the west end of that property. And I just, I explained to him what the setbacks would have to be, and then if he were approved for a special exception use, he would, he's going to take that to, he said, an engineer, uh, what's the one in Fort Dodge?
A clerk, maybe?
For, yeah, he, and they would, uh, basically design that according to what the regulations are. He didn't know exactly what the number would be because of that, so we'll give all that information to the Board of Adjustments as part of, you know, testing.
Oh, if I even remember this right, that little stretch of road that runs east and west in there, I think we vacated that a few years back.
He indicated to me that, uh, that road maybe had gone east, uh, at one time. Uh, his, his driveway actually comes off the very end of that.
I think Ben's here now.
And off and east a little bit, so...
On this here little stretch of road out there by the drag strip, that part that went east and west, we vacated that a few years.
It's all been vacated.
That's what I thought, okay. It just shows up on the map, yet it's a road, so...
Ohio's been vacated too?
No.
You guess that...
It's that east-west.
The only stretch of, of Ohio there...
This little stretch from here to there's been vacated.
It has.
It has, yeah. We did that a couple of years ago. But it's still a road there, so we can... It's a driveway. Is this Ohio?
That's Ohio.
This is dead-end road off of Highway three.
And drag strips about right here.
So Ohio to, uh...
This is setting, it's just looking like... Drag strips right over here.
So it's just left, drag strip.
Yeah, this here is where the ski, street all right.
Anyway, we may think, I believe, of their house. That's as far as the road goes.
Which also brings up a point where the 911 sign is, it's actually on the west end of that property, or right close to the corner. So it's hard to determine what's the front, what's the rear, and so basically...
This is addressed right now?
Yes. So it's, it, but as far as the operation is concerned, until he actually has a design, which I would go over with him, I told him, to make sure whatever, just we decide front-back or whatever, what the engineer wants, we'd make sure that all the setbacks are...
I mean, we're just weren't gonna reestablish the road, is what I was getting at.
No.
Okay.
I guess I'm not even sure where, is it, you're talking on that road?
Well, it's on, it's on the north end of Ohio, out there by the drag strip. Second, second page in. I just wanted to make sure that I gave you that information.
Well, I, it, what I had mentioned before, that, that all the steps should be followed, so that's the... And I won't say any more than that, other than that's the way it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
And working is per protocol.
Yeah. Okay, and like most cases, Jeff's a former student.
That's what, Randy, that's what happens when you teach your life.
We tried to vacate that.
I know.
But we tried, and it never did?
We, well, we tried to vacate... We, well, we tried vacating to the acreage and they were not interested.
Oh, so it still is a road then?
It's a road to their house.
Yes, but the county still, still has a right-of-way road there.
Yep.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to know, 'cause I knew we discussed vacating that stretch of road.
Yeah, we, uh, we attempted, like I said, I can't think of the gentleman's name that lived there before, but, uh, they were not interested.
So, when he comes into looking at what he does with that property, that part has to take into effect that it's still a road.
Yes, it's a road to the, to the acreage.
All right.
Does that show up right on the, correct on the map then? Is that all the further the road goes?
I don't even know if it goes that far.
Okay.
It's not very far and this driveway comes right off the end and goes...
It doesn't go, it does not, looks like it doesn't continue to the east.
No.
No.
Okay.
His driveway's, it runs south and east off of the end of that.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah.
And, and you can see by the, uh, parcel, he has property, uh, east and west of the house.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, just kinda keep Ben informed of what's going on, so.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy, are you?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No.
I wasn't trying to...
It's cheap and all, anyway.
Any other questions?
No, that's good. Thanks, Randy.
Yep. It used to be Gene Rooney's place.
Oh, yeah.
Put that one in the...
Okay. Looks like there's nothing else on, is there anything else? Will we do committee results? All right. Hey, Ben, there is an email that just came out from Katie Cook at, um, I'll forward it to you. Regarding, um, administrative rules for DOT, there's some new revitalization of Iowa's sound economy program stakeholders. So, maybe that might be something that helps. I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Hello?
If you're up.
Um, the only official one I had was on Wednesday the third. I had a Board of Health out at the hospital. And, uh, I've got Nate's report here. I think most of you have seen it. It's a very good report, very detailed. We commented, commended him on a, such a good report. Um, I've also got, uh, ordinance that I'll have to take up to John to have it looked over, but, uh, it's for tanning beds, uh, inspection of them. And, uh, I'll take that up to John, have him look at it. Later in the month, we'll probably put it on our agenda for the first. Other than that, busy week, but not for the county.
On, uh, Tuesday the second, that afternoon, I had a decategorization meeting at, uh, Webster City. Uh, it went actually pretty well. And that's all I had officially, other than looking at more weeds and CRP. But, so that was my one meeting last week. Oh, and I might, before I forget to remind everybody, that we all got an invitation to the Farm Bureau supper this evening at the River Valley Orchards and Winery. So, if anybody was considering that.
All right, the only thing officially is I signed checks for IDDA on Thursday, paychecks. They had nothing.
I had nothing official either.
What Bruce had.
What'd you have, Bruce?
I had no meetings. I had a couple, uh, phone calls from the dean, uh, in reference to someone that is getting in, uh, the person's property. I've also talked with David and, uh, Ben, I'm gonna have a person's, uh, request for, uh, cross bikes that, that they were going to look into. And I told the person to go make sure that there's a work order because as far as we know, we don't have a work order for that, so they aren't gonna panic you that they don't have papers to show that they're supposed to do it, so that's all I had.
So, that's a good reminder to have everybody get their, uh, calls in for a work order that if they need something done.
That's right. Uh, our secondary home people are too far on, uh, mission looking for things to do unless they stay alert or something that belongs to shelter. Um, okay, people still have to call in and clarify, but that's it.
Perfect. Thanks, Bruce.
You're good.
Okay.
I'm gonna be a white cell again.
Did you write in any rain yesterday?
Oh, boy. You know what? I think we were in three seasons. When we left, it was hotter than the eighties. By the time we got over to, towards, uh, western Iowa, I had my hands got warm, so I had my caps were so cold.
Really?
And then by the time we got into South Dakota and got over there last night, um, I had my raincoat on because it was spitting and it was getting chilly and fifty-six degrees this morning.
Wow.
But it's supposed to be ninety and ninety-nine for...
Gee, warming back up nicely.
Get the sunscreen out.
Yep, exactly.
I'm putting on some sunscreen on this morning, so...
All right, drive safe. Have fun.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Nothing else? You got anything, Trish?
No, taxes are done on my side.
Loads into a journey.
Tucker?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are out of session at nine oh nine.
Getting shorter.
Yeah, did good.